2015, Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mrs. King Criswell.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron.
Here.
And Mr. Stuber is unable to be here tonight. I'd like to welcome you now to all, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the great Father with which it stands, one nation under God, in the soul, liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome to another packed house. My name is Rob Felber, I'm Vice President of the Board. And I'm so glad to see the many students, families and faculty from Samuel Bissell Elementary and the RB Chamberlain Middle School with us tonight. Pretty much any night that we don't have to dudge through snow is a good night, right? The Twins Board of Education, in conjunction with our school administrators, sets goals for the district each year. This year, our four main goals revolve around finance, student achievement, community relations, and facilities and grounds. The Board of Education is updated frequently on the status of our yearly goals. Often reports are provided to the Board via administrative reports at this very meeting. Tonight, I wanted to highlight one of these goals, which is community relations, and I'm going to read that goal. "The Twinsburg School District will develop a Business Advisory Council and restructure the Twinsburg Education Foundation in order to support and enhance the mission of our school district." The first part of this goal references a business advisory council, and this very morning saw the first meeting of this group. Led by your district administrators, attendance included teachers, administrators, local business owners, city officials, and representation from the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. The group received updates on the purpose of the council, along with updates on programs from each of the district's schools. The group then conducted small group discussions at each of six tables. There were about forty people that participated and helped the administrators begin the task of furthering our bonds with local businesses, all to foster more opportunities as we prepare our students for career and college. I attended as both a business owner and a representative of our Board of Education. I'm excited about the cooperation, direction, and energy exhibited in this first two-hour session. If you own a business or want to become more involved in this initiative, please contact Superintendent Powers at the Board Office. And this concludes my Vice President's Report, and I'll now turn it over to Mrs. Powers for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Felber.
Close enough.
I'm glad to meet Mr. Stuber there. Oops.
Those would be big shoes.
Good evening, Mr. Felber, Board of Education, families. Always great to see everybody out at one of our meetings, especially our young Tigers. As Mr. Felber indicated, we had a very good meeting this morning with our local businesses and a great group of folks that are interested in partnerships between the school district and the business community here within our three communities. So, as Mr. Felber indicated, if you are a business owner or are working in a business that you think that might have some interesting skill opportunities for any of our students from preschool all the way up to the high school, we'd be interested in talking with you. So, note where to find me at the Board Office, and if that is you, we would love to talk with you about some opportunities for our kids. It has been a very, very busy week, even though it seems like Thanksgiving was months ago, but it hasn't been. You know, winter sports season is kicking off this week. It's all in full swing, and so are all of our holiday vocal music concerts. And earlier this evening, I made a Blackboard Connect call to our families at the high school and the middle school. Unfortunately, Mr. Randall Lanu, who is our music director at the high school and the middle school, has a very serious family health issue that he's dealing with. So tomorrow evening's concert has been postponed until Wednesday, December 16th. We wish Mr. Lanu's family member well, hopefully a quick recovery. But in the meantime, I know I certainly could not direct GE, that would be very interesting. And I know Mr. Welker here can't do that either. So we're going to have to take a pause on the holiday concert. It's postponed till Wednesday, December 16th. Board of Education, the problem with that, though, is that's going to conflict with your board meeting, and I do apologize for that, but December is a very busy month in our school district with lots of activities going on. And unfortunately, that was the only date available to reschedule the concert. So, I apologize to you for the conflict. That's the best that we could do, given the importance of the holiday concert and also the importance of our board meeting. In addition, we just have a lot and a lot of activities going on, so I invite you to please take a look at our district website. Calendar's there with all kinds of activities, and we do appreciate all the support you offer our students by coming out and supporting them through your presence at any of our events. Board of Education, as you know, last week, the Ohio Department of Education released information about the district's local report card. It was information about the release of the report card. Typically, by this point of the year, we have our report card in hand from last school year. But because of the new assessments that are administered in public schools in Ohio, and because of the late delivery of information from the testing companies from last year, everything's been pushed back now until January of 2016. So for the purposes of informing our community, just to let you know, there's going to be two releases, two separate releases. The first one will be on January 14th, and it will include information about our K-3 literacy rating, our graduation rate, and our prepared-for-success rate. And I do want to let the Board of Education know that we heard yesterday in some preliminary data, that our two cohorts for the graduation rate have both earned As again. So that's outstanding news from Twinsburg High, so congratulations to Mrs. Tringel and the high school students. Also, the second release of the information is scheduled for February 25th, 2016, and it will include ratings such as our achievement numbers, our gap-closing information, and information about student progress. So look for that information in February. Of course, the best place to find information about our school district is in our communications. You know, we released the quality profile here a couple of weeks back, and also our district newsletters, and our website has the best information about our school district. So we invite you to take a look at those documents anytime you want information about the Twinsburg City School System. Also, a little commercial. The district PTA Council citrus fundraiser pickup date has been scheduled, and it's going to be scheduled for this coming Saturday, December 5th, at RB Chamberlain Middle School in the auditorium from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We understand this has been a very good fundraiser for the PTA. They have raised over $7,000. They sold more than 250 cases of oranges and grapefruits, can you imagine? So if you are a person who ordered your citrus for holiday gift-giving perhaps, this Saturday is the date from 9:00 to 2:00 at the middle school auditorium. And we appreciate all the efforts of our PTA and all of our booster groups that support our kids here every day. So enough from me this evening. I'll be back in a little bit to talk about our school calendar proposal for 2016-17. In the meantime, I'd like to invite Mr. Scott Winter to come forward to recognize some outstanding Bissell Tigers. Good evening, Mr. Winter.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Hello.
Good evening, everyone. The Students of the Month Program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding achievements at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive achievements of the following students. And kids, as I call you up, we're going to kind of go right in through here, and we're going to go behind the poinsettias, we're going to set up right here. Okay? So just be careful as you walk through, all right, everybody? So, in second grade, Aiden Durst from Mrs. Ziska's class. Sam Hop from Mr. Harrison's class. Azariah Jordan from Mrs. Collins' class. And Logan Petrus from Ms. Jolly's class. And in third grade, Madison Hardman from Mrs. Cardeman's class. Jordan Mauer from Mrs. DePew's class. And Cassidy Will for Ms. Carrie Annie's class. All right, gang, smile big so we can get some good shots of you guys. Okay, so you want to put your, let's put your certificates out this way. There you go. How about one more hand for these fabulous students? Cassie, Cassie. Congratulations. And we're also here tonight to recognize our Staff of the Month, and for November, our Staff of the Month was Mrs. Ziska. So, Mrs. Ziska, can you please come on up and join me? And Mrs. Ziska was nominated for Staff of the Month by Mrs. Gadsden, who is Intervention Specialist at Bissell. And Mrs. Gadsden wrote, "I would like to nominate Mrs. Ziska for Staff of the Month. Mrs. Ziska is a dedicated teacher that goes above and beyond her teaching duties. Mrs. Ziska is knowledgeable, patient, and kind. She teaches creative, enthusiastic lessons to her class daily. She is always willing to assist and share information with fellow staff members. She is a team player, and she is a great asset to Samuel Bissell Elementary School." So I just wanted to take this opportunity, just share a couple of things that have been going on at Samuel Bissell. It's hard to believe that it's already the first week of December, and the second quarter is already winding down. And actually, we just finished up two initiatives at our school, and they were both very successful. Right before the Thanksgiving holiday, we had a food drive to benefit the Emergency Assistance Center in Northfield. And we, after all the food was weighed, we donated more than 1,400 pounds of food to help families in our area. And of course, none of that would have been possible without you guys, our community, our parents, our kids, staff, so thank you all for your generosity. Also, around that same time, we, as part of our initiative with the United Way, we had donation drives at each of the different buildings. And I'm proud to say, at Samuel Bissell, we just finished counting all the money, and as a staff, including kids, and again, our generous families, we raised more than $1,000 for our building. And the best part about that is, all the money that is donated will also benefit the Emergency Assistance Center Northfield for our Paws on Child Hunger Program, which will soon be expanding in our district. So, it really is a wonderful thing. And again, none of this is possible without all of you guys, all of our parents, and just how dedicated you guys are to our district and our kids. A couple of highlights that are coming up in December here. COSI is coming back to Bissell next week, so we have a ton of parent volunteers, so again, thank you for that. It's our third year in a row having it, and again, it's not possible without all of you. So, a lot of great things are happening at Bissell, and we're looking forward to a great 2016. Thank you.
There's always something exciting going on at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. And Mr. Winter, thank you for being here tonight, and pinching for Mrs. Johnson, that you always do such a great job. We appreciate your presence. Now I'd like to ask Mr. King to come forward. He is pinching for Mr. Reese tonight as Assistant Principal at RB Chamberlain.
All right, and we're going to start off with the Chamberlain Students of the Month. And for RB Chamberlain, the students receiving the honor of Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all the six criteria, as I will enumerate in just a moment. Each of them has to meet all the six in all of their classes, as the grade-level teams decide upon two boys and two girls, which are selected each month from each grade level. The six criteria are, that they show respect and consideration for others, they show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities, they exert a positive influence on their classmates, exhibit leadership characteristics, exhibit patriotism and democratic principles, and show responsibility. So it's my pleasure to invite the following students up to receive their award. And as Mr. Winter had pointed out, if we could form a nice, big arc right up here, arc, use that Chamberlain term, we could even probably try to measure it with some of these folks, they would know how to do it. These guys are really smart, by the way. All right, from seventh grade, if I could have Krista Tanner as our First Student of the Month, come on up. Krista Tanner. And again, we're competing with sports at Chamberlain, and the play, and everything else, so I apologize. Cole Kobowski. We call him Max, but for this, we call him Maxwell, so it's one of those things. I get it. All right, so for eighth grade, we have Clay Springer. Last but definitely not least, Brandon Cotton, come on up. See, this is what you get at Chamberlain. They know to hold on. Or maybe it was they saw the little kids do it first. I'm going to say this because they're older and they know. Congratulations. One round of applause, if you would, please. Just a few quick building highlights from Chamberlain. A few things to think about. As Mr. Winter had mentioned, we are getting very close to the end of the nine weeks, which means we are very close to the end of the Chamberlain semester. And again, for those of you who have high school students, you know, take this to note as well. That means we are going to be scheduling very, very soon, especially our eighth graders are going to be scheduling very soon for high school classes. So please make sure that their grades are as high as they can be, that they're as ready, that there is as much intensity in these last few days of 2015 as there can be, because we're going to take a very strong look at the grades that they've earned in their eighth grade, especially these first two quarters, for what they're going to be scheduling for high school. I will say this over and over and over again. I was a high school teacher for over a decade, and I used to think that's where it's at. It's not. Middle school determines what you do in high school. So, these two quarters are probably the most important. So a good, strong finish right now would be excellent, so we can do some great scheduling for them for THS, so please keep that in mind. Also, a few initiatives that we are in the process of actually wrapping up at this point. We too are part of the United Way fundraiser. We are very proud to say that 100% of our donations are going to go for Paws on Hunger. We are also wrapping up our Holiday Helping Hands, where we assist Tigers within Chamberlain to try to give them a little bit of a more merry holiday than they would be having. Our winter sports have kicked off. Basketball's in action, wrestling will be in action this weekend. Our holiday concert, as you just heard, is postponed now until Wednesday, December 16th. If there's a family issue that revolves around the new date, please let me know right away. Mr. Lanu, I'm guessing may be out a day or two coming up, so please let me know, and I will help to make arrangements with that if I can. Also, very important, as I'm thinking about eighth grade, the Washington, D.C. deadline is fastly approaching. Many of you have already registered, I think. I'm already looking, about 240 folks have registered, so we're right on target. But again, that deadline is approaching. I would love to take as many folks as possible with me, and I'm the guy who's leading it this year. So, again, if you have any trouble registering, or if you have any questions, please feel free to email or call. For those of you watching on TV, 330-486-2283, let me know. And back to you.
Thank you, Mr. King. A lot of information this evening. We always appreciate hearing from our principals and assistants about the great things going on at our buildings. Mr. Felber, that concludes our report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we're at committee reports. Are there any reports from my colleagues? Okay. Would you like to go into your, Mrs. Powers, your administrative report, or do you want to?
At this point, I think if some of the families wanted to leave, I know the meeting gets a little long, and our little ones especially.
This is your time.
Might want to depart, but you can stay if you're welcome, absolutely.
You're more than welcome, but you've got homework or...
I know I've got room.
Okay, I think we're able to continue.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Felber. This evening, as my administrative report goes, we would like to present for the first time the proposed academic calendar for the 2016-2017 school year. Before I provide specific details, I want to just remind the Board about the process behind building the calendar for our school district. It's actually a very nice collaborative effort between members of our staff, and also, we keep in mind the request from the Cogga Valley Career Center, CVCC, trying to make sure that our calendar is somewhat aligned, if not very aligned, to CVCC. There are eight member districts that belong to the CVCC, and if every school district did something different than the next, it surely would be difficult to schedule classes at CVCC. So, Dr. Roebuck always reminds the eight associate superintendents to please be kind to CVCC when we take a look at developing our calendars, and we certainly try to do that very thing for our students at CVCC. But what I have to present for you this evening is our proposed calendar. It was vetted out by the members of our staff. We provided an opportunity for them to take a look at not only this calendar, but several other options. They provided feedback. And this evening, I'd like to present the calendar that I'd like to recommend for '16-17. Recall, a year ago, the Department of Education changed the manner in which school districts designed their calendars. It used to be designed based on school days, and now it's based on hours of time for the various grade bands. We far exceed the number of days by those hours, and so we're not necessarily concerned about having calamity days built into the calendar. But you will note that in the bottom right-hand corner of our calendar, we did put a contingency plan. Worst case ever should happen, Marty and I talked about this earlier today, it's always good to have a Plan B in case it's ever needed. So even though the ODE no longer requires there to be contingency plans, this particular calendar does have a contingency plan that is quite similar to what it has always been. And basically, if worst case should ever happen, we would be using the days of, let's see, February 17th, and then spring break, working backward from Friday to Monday, should those days ever be needed. I don't think they ever will be, but you never know. Like, as Marty said today, if we didn't put this down on our plan, we wouldn't need it. So it's here just as a little bit of an insurance policy, should worst case ever happen. But anyhow, taking a look at what we're proposing for you to consider, beginning in August, the staff-first workday would be August 15th. There would be an opportunity for a day-to-day on the 16th, and that's counted as an instructional day per the teacher's contract, although the students do not report. Their first day of school for the '16-17 school year will be Wednesday, August 17th. September 2nd would be another day where the students would not report. That would be a curriculum day. Professional development for our staff would occur on that day. That will provide an opportunity for our families to have a long Labor Day weekend, because we don't have school on Monday, September 5th, which is Labor Day for next year. Moving into October, one of the things that we considered in building the calendar were concerns that I heard from members of our community who happened to practice the Jewish faith. And so what we took a look at is where Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur ended up to be on the calendar, and whether or not we could accommodate building one of our curriculum days, or day-to-days, or maybe more than one, to accommodate some of our families who would prefer that their children would attend religious services on those days. We were able to recommend that Monday, October 3rd, which is one of the holy days that we just mentioned, would now be a day-to-day, so our staff would report on the 3rd, but the students would not have school on the 3rd. Again, that would provide an opportunity for families of our Jewish faith to be able to take their children to temple that day. Unfortunately, the second Jewish holiday follows the second week, the 11th and the 12th, and because of the way that week is already going to be a bit choppy, we have the end of the quarter on the 13th, and the 14th is NEOEA Day, which is already a day off of school. It was going to be a difficult thing to have the 12th off, be back in school on the 13th, which is the end of the quarter, and then be back off of school on the 14th. So we were not able to accommodate that particular request for that week in October, unfortunately, because of how that week is scheduled to be with NEOEA Day and the end of the quarter following the same week. Moving on to November of 2016, we always try to plan a professional day on Election Day, and next year will be a big election, a general election, and so on the 8th of November, the students will not be reporting. That will be a professional meeting day for our staff. And then, of course, the Thanksgiving holiday of a year from now, the 23rd through the 25th of November, will be the Thanksgiving break for our students and our staff. One of the things that was a big conversation is always the winter break. And it's interesting, the desire of our staff to have those three weekends off, and that's exactly what is happening here. Two full weeks off with three weekends is a desirable thing if you're an educator, and once again, that interest was clearly communicated to members of the committee that worked on these calendars. So the students' last day before winter break in, a year up in December of 16, would be December 16th, and that would also be the end of the semester, just like it is this year with the semester breaking here in December. The students would not report back to school until January 3rd. The staff would come back on the 2nd for a workday. They work on their report card grades, they have professional development for half the day, and then the students are back in session on January 3rd, 2017. Can you believe I'm saying 2017? That is an amazing thing. January 16th is Martin Luther King Junior Day, so that's a national holiday. We don't have school on the 16th of January. Moving on to February, February 17th is a day off. We usually have a day off on a Friday in February, makes a long holiday attached to, that would be President's Day on the 20th, and so that is also on the calendar for next year. Going to March, the end of the third quarter is March 10th. The spring break of next year is actually going to occur the last week, if you would approve this calendar, I should say, the last week in March from the 27th through the 31st. The reason why spring break is in March, or is proposed to be in March next year, is because the Easter holiday weekend is late. A year from now, it doesn't, Easter Sunday is not till the 16th of April. It's very late for us to break for an Easter week off, and so the suggestion is being made loudly and clearly by our staff to have spring break the last week in March. That's what the proposal is here. Students will be returned from spring break on Monday, the 3rd of April. And then, Friday, the 14th, is Good Friday. That would be a day off of school for members of the staff and students. And then, this is going to be nice for the families. That Easter weekend is one day extended for the students if this calendar is approved because the 17th of April is a day-to-day for the staff, which means the students do not report. So, a long holiday weekend there in April. I guess the best news for the students is the last student day in May is before Memorial Day. It would be Friday, May 26th. That would mean that commencement for the class of 2000, would that be 2017, would be somewhere in that week, probably between the 23rd and the 26th. The rule is commencement cannot occur greater than three days prior to the students' last day of school. So, Mrs. Turingo would, as soon as this calendar is approved in January, be talking to E.J. Thomas Hall, trying to secure the hall for one of those days in May. Be an important thing for us to get done pretty quickly here. And then, the staff members' last day, teachers' last day would then be Tuesday, May 30th. So, Board of Education, the way the statute is now written, later in the business part of the meeting, there'll be an opportunity for public comment regarding this proposed calendar. Then, we have to wait at least 30 days before the board would take action on this calendar, providing for, an opportunity for parents to either call you or me or a member of the staff and provide additional feedback as we wait until January 6th to approve the calendar, hopefully. So, that's the story behind the calendar. We appreciate all of the efforts of many staff members. There were some options that we looked at that were a bit unusual, but this is a pretty typical calendar for us and I think one that would be appreciated by our parents as well.
Thank you. Any questions for anyone?
No, it looks good. I appreciate the extra steps to accommodate a more holiday.
Thank you.
I know it's a moving target all the time. Thank you. We're at the point of remonstrance in the agenda. I don't believe there are any blue cards. We'll continue on. We are at H1. Treasurer's Report, resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting minutes of November 18th, 2015, and special meeting November 20th, 2015, is sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion? So move Ms. Kane Criswell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. That item passes 4-0. We are now at Section I. Without any objection from my colleagues, I'll read I-1, 2, and 3 together. I-1, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I-1 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I-2, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. I-3, resolved that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit I-3 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. May I have a motion for those three items?
So move.
So move by Ms. Davis. Second. Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Any question, discussion? I just want to commend Vice Principal at the high school, Roy Warren, for nine and a half years' service. He's going to be retiring, I believe, end of February. And so, a lot of good service there. He will be missed. And a lot of good faith and congratulations on retirement. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that passes 4-0. I'm going to, without objection from my colleagues, read J-1 through 4. J-1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation from the RDP Sports Plus in the amount of $1,000 to the THS Pep Club per the attached exhibit. Title I, Parent Involvement Policy, resolve that the Twins Board of Education adopts the Title I Parent Involvement Policy that was approved at the Title I meeting held on November 19th, 2015 per the attached exhibit. J-3, Inventory Deletions, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. And 4, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the below listing of items to be deleted from the inventory at Wilcox and that's in our agenda detailed there. Is there a motion for these four items? So move by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. I wanted to point out, first off, Mrs. Powers, anybody have any comments on these?
They're pretty standard, with the exception of the Title I Parent Involvement Policy. Board of Education, you know that we receive Title I funding through our CCIP annually and it's a nice amount of money that we provide intervention strategies for our children. But part of the requirement that we need to meet in order to receive those funds is for annually, there to be a parent meeting where the parents take a look at our parent involvement policy, offer feedback, and then, the parent involvement policy then is forwarded to the board for their consideration. And that's what we have this evening on the agenda.
And that's a federally mandated meeting that was held.
Yes, it is.
And that was November 19th. Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that passes 4-0. And now, we are at J-5 and this was the public hearing that Superintendent Powers referenced earlier on the school calendar. Resolve that the Twins Board of Education holds this public hearing to give notice of the recommendations of the 2016-2017 academic calendar and to provide an opportunity for public comment per the attached exhibit. May I have a motion for J-5, please? So move by Mrs. Terrell Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Regardless of the vote momentarily, we will have a pause if anybody does wish to address the board. As Mrs. Powers did indicate, there is a 30-day mandated period. It started about two years ago, per the state law, to not only pay attention to a joint vocational school district, should we be attached to one, which we are, and also to have a 30-day period. So, as a reminder, we will have opportunity and you have many opportunities to contact the board office as well via email, website, and so forth. Any questions on the calendar? Further comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And now, the pause. If anybody would care to address the board? Once, twice? Okay. We are at K miscellaneous. Anything from my colleagues? You know, thoughts and prayers from Mr. Lanu and his family at this time.
Mr. Felber, if I might just add one other thing I forgot to mention on the calendar. One of the concerns that our parents had about where NEOEA does, falls, is typically, the National Assessment Day falls in the same week and it's the end of the quarter. Finally, folks that administer the PSAT are taking heed and the National Assessment Day has been pushed off a week next year. So, it will actually fall on Wednesday, the 19th of October. So, that will eliminate some of the concerns that we heard from some of our high school parents about where that fell relative to the end of the quarter, relative where NEOEA Day is. I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Good, though, and that works out.
That's better, right.
Any other comments? All right. Entertainer motion to adjourn. So move by Ms. Kane Criswell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes 4-0. And we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you.